Let me go through that briefly. The first six items all consist of sets of meeting minutes dating back from late January at the planning retreat through late February, including both regular special meetings, closed sessions, and workshops. So you have the, all six of those for action. Item number seven is the transmittal of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan Annual Report. Now, this comes to you from the Planning and Zoning Board. This was actually discussed at their January meeting that you were all in attendance. And this report reviews the accomplishments of the land use plan over the past period and addresses their goals and action items for the future. So this is just simply a transmittal of that information to you all. Item eight is a action to approve Declaration of Surplus Police Vehicles. The police department is recommending four vehicles be declared as surplus. There are two 2009 Ford Explorers and two 2014 Dodge Chargers. And once this would be approved, then they would be sold through an online site that the city uses, that's used by a number of governmental jurisdictions. And then the final consent agenda item, a request to close streets. This comes to you through the Tourism Development Authority. And it would be in conjunction with the Friday Night Live event that'll be held on Friday, May the 12th, and would include a NASCAR display on certain designated streets, which include Main Street between the Railroad of Myrtle, Airline, Mill, and also Hill Streets. And that would be from 2:00 PM until 11:00 PM on the 12th. So that can, that is the consent agenda.
With respect to that NASCAR display, have the business owners on Main Street been informed of this, considering the-
I can't really speak to that, but if you want to address that or discuss it, it could be pulled from the consent agenda.
Well, we might have a-
No, this is just a recent development and that's ongoing for meeting. So if there's something that's not in the process-
All right. I would assume they will be. Yes.
Okay. Do I put your student consent agenda?
What, the review?
Huh?
The review.
Yeah. Now, let's see, we got to-
Well, I mean, we need to-
Implication.
Right. Yes.
Jimmy, want to do the implication?
I would love to do the implication, as long as we're, there's no other comments on the consent agenda. Okay. Then I'm happy to do it.
What, you gonna do the-
Call the official meeting board.
Yeah, let's call the meeting board.
All right. Let us bow our heads and pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessings and bounty you've bestowed on our community. We ask for your continued grace and wisdom as we transact the public business tonight, and that you continue to watch over and guide the city of Belmont and its employees and civil servants. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Join me for the pledge, please.
With diligence to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You want to set the agenda?
Oh, I do, but I think first-
We have some recognition.
We have some recognitions and acknowledgements.
We do have some recognitions and acknowledgements. ABC Store? What's up, guys?
Good evening.
How you doing?
Good, how are you? My name's Brian Burns. I'm chairman of the ABC Sports, Tim Sommersley's a member of the board. Just came by to give you our quarterly distribution for the second quarter. Checks totaling $54,333.75. We are of the one store, Belmont, or one store ABC stores in the state. We are rent sixth. Unbelievable. And it is our goal for this fiscal year to have plus six million sales. So that's what we're trying to do. Glad to give this money back to the city. And do they give to yous?
Very good to see you.
Good to see you, Brian.
It's like the mafia, right? You're out, and now you're back here.
Yeah.
You're welcome. So we, uh-
I gotta give this-
We've had a really strong, uh, really strong year.
Pardon? When we get to like-
That's right, that's right. You know, we've had a really strong year, and we're growing. We keep growing quarter after quarter. And we outperform most of the smaller town ABC stores around here. So we-
You know what's amazing is that we're a little reluctant to come up with the same ABC store. So we're dealing with some of it.
Yes.
And then we make money.
Right. Even the state itself said we'd have to do more than a million a year.
Absolutely.
But thank you for all the support. It's great. And hopefully we'll be back with more money in the next quarter.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Now, I, I'm going to move to set the agenda. Second.
All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Okay.
I'm also going to move to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Second.
Second, all in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, ready. Now, let's go to the regular agenda. Public comment. Anybody sign up for public comment? We got a few people signed up for public comment. One, Ed Byers, and Neil Brock, and Matt Hart. Matt Hart. Okay. You want to come up?
Who's first?
Ed.
First one.
Who's first?
Ed Byers.
Ed Byers. Got three minutes. Hello.
I appreciate the time given. And my name is Ed Byers from 266 World River Road. And I was, last time I was at a meeting was March 4th, 2019. And it was about the housing. I expressed my concerns about a buffer zone and so on there. And some things have arisen since that happened. And I didn't know where to go. Myself, my wife, my neighbor and his wife were there. We were the only two lots at the end of the drive. What I'm, my problem is, is I've got the screening that was supposed to be given for the buffer adjustment. And it gave to different kinds of fencing, landscaping, natural and all that, which they haven't got to yet. Have safe, adequate, constant egress, ingress that will be maintained for the existing residents located at the end of the road. We were going over things such as that nature. About three weeks ago, I ran into a gentleman, Doug Ailes with the RB Group. Seen him a few times. All the other guys, his bosses, I guess, would be, are gone. He was setting up flags down there at my driveway area, right there within Stone Throw, my house. He was with the thread trip. Well, I asked him a few questions and all. Well, come to find out, he gave me this map. And we talked vaguely. Haven't seen him since, or got any calls from him. I've got a 50, 60-foot buffer on this map. He said this is fine. So to go back to the 2019, when we brought up our concerns about buffer zone and everything, you know, we were granted a hundred feet was, was given right off the bat, with barely anybody having to say anything. He was asked, or well, he being Chase Carley, I think, was in charge at the time at that meeting. And he was asked if they'd be willing to increase the buffer area. And they were, at first, were not willing to agree on this additional condition. But after consideration, they agreed to the condition of an additional 60. Well, what happened was the 60 was granted, this was at the other council, oh, downtown there. A gentleman my left, which I do not remember, a council member, brought up about another 60 feet, which was great. So that totaled it from one to 160. And we walked out of that meeting that night with the impression, and it sounds like that's what was going on, that we got the 160. Well, they're down right close to the house now, which is 60 feet. Now, after all this went on that night, Martha Stowe made a motion to approve the resolution and of the, of the lots and the, of the construction of the development. And with the additional condition of an additional 60-foot wide buffer be provided to the adjacent lots and future lots located at the end of the road. Doug Gadd seconded the motion. So-
Ed, your three minutes are up.
Oh, they are. I'm sorry. That might have been a bell out.
I would- Tiffany. This is our interim planning director.
Planning over here?
Yes.
I, I thank you and appreciate it.
Thank you, Ed.
Thanks. All right. Next person we have to sign up is Neil Brock.
Which element?
World's-
World's Road.
It's that new one more than the guard.
We got three minutes.
The new one more than the guard.
Neil Brock in 4702 South New Hope Road here in Belmont. And I'd like to welcome Mr. Barry Webb back. Good to have you. But I want to ask a question that Councilman Heffron actually asked back some time ago. And I think you'll agree with me in the fact of whole council, but the answer that was given to you guys, I didn't find quite satisfactory. And that deals with your nonprofit, the DBDA. And I didn't come to bash it or talk down. In fact, I wish you all success in the world. But I went back and looked at the minutes and found that the entity was formed 2014 by unanimous vote. 2015 received its approval by the IRS as a nonprofit. Yet for five years ongoing, there's no mention of it on your audits. Doesn't exist. It was not until June of '21 that it shows up as a component. Now, I find it hard to believe that a reputable firm such as Martin Starne's that they overlooked this. Maybe they did. I don't know. But Council Heffron actually kind of asked this to the representative that was here. That, kind of that question, you know, how did this, this all of a sudden go, whoops, there it is. And we need to find out. Were they told it was a separate entity? What were they told? We don't know. But we need to ask that question. And I would employ the council to bring the, that accounting firm back before you and the people, and find out, did they overlook this? I mean, it's hard to believe that, you know, somebody didn't look on the general ledger and see money going out, money going somewhere, and asked the question, where's this going? You know, how, why did it not show up until June of '21? So I would employ the council, if you will, to ask Martin Starne's, what were you told? When were you told it? Did you overlook it? And frankly, in my opinion, if this was an oversight on their part, you might need to look at a new accounting firm. Because I know in the corporate world, if you miss my taxes for six years and get me in trouble, I'm not going to keep you on my books. So I would just ask the council to ask them some questions, because this entity receives taxpayer money has, throughout its whole time. So we need to find out. Why was it not mentioned on the audits?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tiffany, can you take care of that for me?
That's all right.
We'll, we'll follow up.
You're very, very helpful.
Yes.
Yes, we have to speak Matt Hart. How you doing, Matt?
Well, Matt Hart from about 19 Kendra here in Belmont. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'd like to note that I'm here speaking on behalf of City of Belmont Planning and Zoning Board.
That was a quick three minutes. Don't blink or you'll miss it.
Speaking on behalf of City of Belmont Planning and Zoning Board as its current chairman to provide you a brief in-person update for our upcoming meeting this Thursday, March 16. First, the Planning and Zoning Board is excited to have the major development plan process on our agenda. We would like to thank you again for your participation last month in our joint workshop to discuss this topic. Our agenda packet includes a well-composed summary of discussion dating back to August of 2022, as well as the proposed amendments to the Land Development Code. Barring any unforeseen issues, the Planning and Zoning Board plans to remit a recommendation to you for your consideration at your April City Council meeting. Secondly, staff has provided the Planning and Zoning Board with consultant responses to a recent RFQ that asks firms to review the current Land Development Code related to diverse affordable housing choices, also known as the, also known as the missing middle, as well as recommendations for revision to include these housing types within the city of Belmont. The Board intends to review these proposals from a technical perspective and provide a recommendation to the City Council for your April meeting. We would greatly appreciate an opportunity to be part of a task force, to work with the consultant through their work over the next six to eight months. We believe our technical expertise through this process will be a valuable addition to the work that needs to be done. And at your direction, we can generate a list of interested Planning and Zoning Board members for your consideration. Finally, the Planning Board will continue our discussions related to density on the peninsula following the joint workshop in February. We heard varying comments on how to address population increases and related traffic issues south of Nixon Road, and shared that these issues take time to digest. Based on the joint workshop's success in February, your Planning and Zoning Board understands these issues and will work to develop a response that is rooted in sound planning principles in a timely manner. We look forward to seeing you at an upcoming Planning and Zoning Board meeting, where you are all encouraged to attend and participate. And should you, any of you need my contact information, staff can provide my cell phone and my email. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for noncontinuous annexation request for 211 School Street in North Belmont.
On the public hearing.
I'll second.
All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Public hearing.
Yeah.
He doesn't need to speak yet. Yeah, I think it would, for a public hearing, it should be.
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I got that one.
This is a-
I don't-
Ready?
Yeah.
Always ready.
Sorry.
This is a public hearing for a proposed annexation of a lot at 211 School Street in North Belmont. You can see on the slide on the screen that it's indicated with the yellow star across from North Belmont Elementary School. In North Belmont, we have no ETJ. So the lot in the center that says Belmont at the lower right is in the city and is owned by the applicant of this lot. The applicants are Jerome and Andre Cale. They're asking to be brought in. They're currently zoned Gaston County R1. Surrounding zoning is Gaston County R1, except for the adjacent Belmont Lot, which is Belmont GR. The elementary school is zoned to Gaston County C3. You can see the boundary line to the lower left. Woodlong Street is across, across Woodlong Street is Goshen Woods, which is a former mill village that's in the city. And then you can see toward the lower part of the stream, that one lot that is in. And lots on Roper Street to the lower right that are in the city of Belmont. So this lot just is a single-family residential lot. It stands next to the lot that the Cale's owned that is in the city, and they are requesting annexation. Any questions?
Well, just, how did, how did that lot, the lot that's in Belmont, get in Belmont when everything surrounding it-
Good question.
Yeah.
Parks, correct. Correct me if I'm wrong. The North Belmont annexation back in the late 80s, early 90s, late 80s, yeah, consisted of Southern Benedictine Society land, land that was owned by Parkdale or predecessor, RL Stone Mill land, and maybe some far yarn land. This, I think this one lot was, it did have a house on it. It was probably somehow associated with either RL Stone Mills or Parkdale. Probably had a supervisor's house on it, maybe. Larger lot. That's my best get. Wasn't working here then.
All right. Um, do we have anyone signed up for a public comment on this?
One person.
One person? Okay. Then maybe that will-
That might-
Sure.
That's all I have to know. There's a public-
John Russell.
Hey, John.
Hey.
All right. We just got to the part where we're on public comment. Go, come to step back.
Right, yes. Great. Somehow I've been listening, but then something happened and I got cut off.
Are you ready for public comment?
The clerk has found the sufficiency you've had to require other hearings. Mr. Russell's up if he needs to speak.
Do we want to go ahead and have a-
Can you all hear me?
Yes. Do we need to-
Okay, great. Thanks, Tiffany. So first of all, I just want to apologize for not being able to be with you tonight. And I really appreciate Tiffany, Danny working to make as possible for you to appear by sound. I did not hear Alex's presentation, but be happy to take any questions and provide any additional detail or background. For some reason, I lost the connection right when we started. But basically, from the homeowner's perspective, they've been working with staff now for a number of months. I think what their, their plan for the property and for this project is relatively straightforward. It's unfortunately complicated by having two properties in different jurisdictions. And I think the background of how we got here is the cleanest way to address the requirements of the Land Development Code, the Belmont Land Development Code, and to do what the property owner wants, which is to build a garage, to add a extension to the back of the home, is to do an annexation and then go through the variance proceeding to make sure that stuff is approved. A lot of that is already underway. The Board of Adjustment met last week, and they've deferred any decision until the council could do this annexation. Appreciate the staff's work and efforts to get to this point. I think the impact from just a purely annexation standpoint is relatively minimal. If it's a single-family house, it's going to stay a single-family house. So there's limited impact to the city. There is some potential benefit in adding the one house to the city, but it, the plan is to recombine, so it's just going to be one single-family property. There's certainly going to be a help to the homeowner, to the trail. And appreciate you all's willingness to adhere and consider this as one way to help.
Did, yeah. Did I understand correctly that they want to put a garage on this piece of property? That's why they need the annexation?
The garage would be on the vacant property. So there's a parcel that's to the northeast of the property to the annex. It's in the city limits. It's been in the city limits for probably fifty years and longer than that. So it's an annex to the city and it is a mill property. It was subsequently today to the school board, and that school board has only sold it to the Cales. So that's where they want to put the garage. They will then recombine the property because under the Land Development Code, it's not for a accessory structure such as a garage without a primary structure. So once the property is recombined into a single lot, it's going to be the annex property, which is a family home, will be combined with the vacant lot. There'll be enough room to the garage then. And it will meet that requirement of the Land Development Code. So yes, that's the long-winded answer to the statute of entitlement, is to build a garage that complies with the length of size and footprint requirements in the Land Development Code.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
Who was that? Who signed up for public comment?
Public comment.
Who's on? Yeah, well, one, Jeremy Wilcox signed up for seat two. He's not here.
Okay.
Yeah, he's here. He's here.
Yeah, it's Jeremy. Hi, Jeremy.
I'm Jeremy Wilcox with Wilcox Incorporated. I live at 203 Harrison Landing in Escania, representing the Cales. I'll be the contractor on this project. I wasn't sure, with John being in Colorado, if he'd be able to Skype in and answer any questions.
Okay. So since we've gone about this in a somewhat roundabout way, the property was somehow, and the vacant property that's already in Belmont ended up in Belmont because it was a mill property, then went to the-
In a store that was on that property.
Okay.
A long time ago. And it was. Because of the mills, they did a blanket coverage in with Parkdale and all of that. That's how it came into the city.
Okay.
The house there was Mr. Cale's father's. He grew up in that house. We're going to remodel the house, add on the back, and put a detached garage. He's a car enthusiast, trying to put a garage there, but I've jumped in and you can do that and combine.
Okay. All right.
So Frank will stay the same left and right. We're going to go out the back about 24 feet. It'll all be remodeled, look really nice, put a detached garage that meets the land.
Okay. Very good.
Do we have any comments, questions?
Move to come out of public hearing? Second.
Come out of public hearing? Second. All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. That means we have to go ahead and vote?
Uh, yes.
On the-
Or annexation.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the-
Motion to approve, okay.
Motion to approve the annexation.
I'll second.
Yeah.
Second, all in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you, Jeremy.
Any questions, because it's always had, or that's pretty best in it.
Yeah.
All right. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for School Street zoning assignment request to establish city residential GR zoning for this 211 School Street.
Move to go into public hearing, second.
Go into public hearing, second. All in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Having just annexed the property, you are now tasked with assigning Belmont zoning to the parcel. It's currently zoned, as I said, Gaston County R1. This is, for the record, Gaston County parcel ID number 183639. We are proposing straight GR general residential zoning for the lot. It's approximately a quarter acre, has a single-family house on it. And as we saw, it's adjacent to the lot that's already in the city.
Well, it's now in the city too.
Correct.
Yes.
Surrounding zoning, we went over that in the, in the previous action item. Next. This is a graphic of the surrounding zoning. Does anyone have any questions on, on that side? This is located within a suburban neighborhood district within the comprehensive land use map. It calls for single-family homes in moderate density neighborhoods. Can include churches and schools. Obviously, there's a school across the street and a couple of churches down the way. We feel that GR zoning is the appropriate designation for this lot and fits the long range, long-range vision. We feel that GR zoning is the appropriate designation for the, this lot and fits the long range, long-range vision, vision for the area. The yellow star indicates the approximate location of the lot within the comprehensive land use, land map. So you're being asked to take, hear the report, take public comment, discuss and render a decision. The planning board, um, last month voted unanimously to recommend approval to you. So, tonight you can approve this as presented, approve it and modify it or disapprove it. We're, we're asking that you find that this is a reasonable request and in the public interest and is consistent with the goals of the comp plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, is there anyone signed up for public comment?
No.
Okay. Motion to come out of public hearing.
Second.
All favors on?
Aye. Motion to approve as presented, second.
All favors on?
Aye, I would also, uh, make a motion that, um, this zoning map amendment is a reasonable request. Um, and is in the public interest because it allows potential addition to the property tax base and is consistent with, uh, the goals of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan and the category of land use. Second.
All favors on?
Aye.
Okay, uh, for the reports, uh, there are several board and committee reports listed for which you received minutes of their recent meetings for information, so unless you have any questions on any of those, I'll just skip down to the interim managers' report. Uh, the main things I had were just to, uh, list a few upcoming events, uh, and then we'll have a couple of brief items. Your next workshop is a week from tonight, uh, and it's unusual, there are consecutive weeks, but since this meeting was pushed from last week, uh, the workshop will be next Monday and you'll be dealing with primarily the CIP proposals for the coming year. At that meeting. Also a reminder about this Thursday at four o'clock is the grand opening for the Chronicle Mill Project, I think you've all been contacted about that, uh, but just a note about that. And then also, uh, on Tuesday, March twenty-first, another reminder for, uh, those of you that are either planning to attend or may still wish to attend the tour of the Arbor Ridge Independent Living Facility that Tiffany has set up for you to view, and I think that's Hunter's one? Also, uh, one final item to mention in terms of events, uh, Thursday, March thirtieth at five PM is the Montross Chambers Annual Award Celebration. So if any of you are interested in that, make you aware of that, certainly get anybody signed up.
I went last year. Is that the thirtieth?
The thirtieth.
March thirtieth.
Thursday, March thirtieth, uh, thirty.
I haven't signed up yet, but yeah. Yes, I mean.
Um, I'll let you know.
I will also let you know.
Okay, uh, tonight each of you received the latest code enforcement update, uh, for your information, Lindsay is here, if you have any questions or want any clarification on any of this information.
Uh, well, um, explain the Holly Avenue stuff, um, with those two properties. If, if this is in litigation, I understand that, that, um, an order to demolish was issued to both the brother and the sister. But if it's in litigation and the attorney's told neither one of them to touch the property, like what, how are we going to untangle ourselves from this legal thicket?
My goal is to get the attorney to contact me, I've had a hard time getting in touch with him to actually get a full story on what's going on, I feel like I'm getting it from two different ends. So I'm hoping that this approach will have them, um, contact me so that we can figure out exactly what's going on, and if it is, it's actually in litigation.
Very good, everything else? Good, thank you.
Thank you.
And you also received a report from Chief Falls, uh, trap, two recent traffic studies and shows the results of that, uh, in that, in that information. And then the, uh, final report we had would be the monthly financial update, which Kevin will present to you now.
Slides that Jared put together for us. This will be your twenty-two audit, it's nearing completion, uh, just so you know, we met with First Tryon, I think he's got that, uh, there on that bullet point, but we met with them, uh, last week. We, our plan is April fourth, uh, to submit the audit, because that's the last day, we hope to do it before April fourth. But April fourth is the date that Martin Starnes has to submit that report. Um, and at that time as well, uh, we'll also have council, um, approve that corrective action plan that we've been doing, and we're going to go ahead and have a resolution done. Because I think that'll look good when we send that to the LGC. Um, so then, uh, the LGC will meet June the sixth, we'll be going to Raleigh for that. And in the meantime, we will already have, uh, the RFP out for the loans. So our expected closing date is June the eighth. Could go a little bit, a few days past that, but that's what First Tryon believes is we could close on June the eighth. I've got the cash flow projections, you can see what we're having to date, eleven point four billion, and just a little bit, uh, left to complete that project. And you can see June is where we started catching up, now, there are other reserves that we could go to if we had to, but, um, this was, this is just showing cash on hand. Uh, but by June the eighth, we should be good, and that number, um, which one is it, should go off the chart, operating revenue, that's the purple line.
And, and just to kind of confirm with, if we do, um, get it by this timeline, let's say June eighth or a little bit afterwards, we will not have to tap into any of the like enterprise funds or anything like that?
Correct. That's an emergency, if you had to, but we, we don't expect that at all.
Right, right. Yeah.
So we're still on track, um, everything has tracked out Jared when he prepared the, these estimates and cash flow projections, they've been right on target. And we're nearing the end, uh, we just got an email from Martin Starnes, Barry, we'll talk to them tomorrow, um, they're wrapping up some things, I think that's the end.
And of course, they would, uh, at some point, they're required to come here and, uh, meet with us and present, yes.
They will present, correct.
Has, uh, First Tryon given us any indication of what we might be looking at as far as like interest charges on the loan?
We didn't ask him, and I can ask him, see what numbers they're seeing and get that back to you, it's probably different than when we had talked before when it was around two, two percent, so I'm sure things have changed a little bit. Hope we better than, um, something get right now.
Okay, can we also, I don't know if we've talked about this, but just as we get closer to that point, is there a way to potentially mitigate or offset some of that higher interest by keeping some of our cash as a down payment for this? Is that something that we can look at?
To, um, First Tryon.
Because if we could mitigate as much as the interest rate, because to Mark's point, two percent and now what, probably?
Four to five.
Four to five.
More than two. If we, yeah, more than two, if we could mitigate the extra two or three point or at least a point or anything like that, that would probably be preferred, if we can afford it, of course, with the cash. Yeah, I'd be interested in looking at that too.
And of course, the terms that we can, whatever we get into there will, will affect it as well, the shorter we, uh, take that down to fifteen, that's even better.
Correct, because then we basically, there's no net impact to the taxpayers with us delaying this.
And we should have some competition, we've had three lenders reach out asking if we're getting close, so we know we should have at least three responses, uh, but, uh, with First Tryon, they have a nice list of people that they send this out to. So we should get quite a few responses back, I hope they're competitive, right, because it's a good loan for them to hold, it's very secure, they know they're going to get.
Well, we own it. Yeah.
It's very secure.
It's very, it's completely secure, one would say.
Yeah, yeah, the whole staff's done well, yeah, he's done amazing, and, uh, to get us through this, so we're proud of him. And First Tryon will be here too, I was telling Barry, uh, to answer some questions for you about some other things that we've been talking about with bonds and those types of things in April at that workshop. So get your questions ready, they'll be at your disposal then.
Cool. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin, appreciate that. Interim managers' report.
Yeah, that's, that's all I have, Mayor.
That's all you have?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anybody have, uh, any comments they want to make?
Other business, I do. Um, just if. Oh, uh-oh, am I in trouble, is that a demerit? You're on the mayor's list. Just a quick update as we're kind of coming close to spring, well, the weather's kind of being a little crazy, what's the update on the bathroom renovation of Stowe Park? Mid-April, okay, I just wanted to reiterate that, to just double check.
We have a meeting next week on the road meeting to discuss it, but from the last meeting, most of the we were on.
It doesn't look like a lot is going on?
Yeah, that was what I was looking.
It's a little.
They didn't, they've done all the internal things, part of it, a lot of it's done, electrical, done well, so. The ceiling, they've done a slab, I mean, it was literally. It looks like this, and that's real.
Okay.
Like holes, like big holes to go in and do instead of just.
Wow. And that didn't, that didn't change any of the costing or anything associated with it, did it? Okay, perfect, um, another one, just kind of those maintenance, they've been down for a while and I don't know if there's a safety hazard, but can we get the Crescent signs back up over there on East Catawba? They have fallen off of the posts. I didn't, I just, I think a couple of days ago, I'm, I, I haven't noticed them back up, so if they're back up, I apologize, but. And, um, hold on one second, um, two more things, with the closed street for that movie that was being filmed, did we get any feedback from the Main Street, um, any of the businesses downtown? So it was all good, okay, because I know that that was a concern for a few. That was today, wasn't it? Or was that today? Yeah. So we haven't heard anything? Okay, and then just the last thing, I did, I kind of figured out this last minute, um, because I knew the firefighter, but if we could get invites as a council to future promotions, penning ceremonies, I think that would be pretty prudent for the city council. Nope, completely understand, yep, thank you, that's all I have.
Um, yeah, just one item, um, traveling on Eagle Road over the past weeks, I've noticed there's a fire hydrant there near Vesta, I think. Which has been, had a, a black trash bag over it, it's been taped off for some time, is that, what's going on with that?
I don't know the specific hydrant, but we, the supply chain is still a huge concern with fire hydrants, we ordered fire hydrants last August, and we still have them. So, there are a few.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I only have one thing, um, Bill, you, you get to answer a lot of questions, but, um, I'd, I'd been, uh, driving around, uh, town, uh, with my fiancee, looking at different neighborhoods and had noticed some potholes on some city streets. Um, where the, one on Vesta and one on Pebble Creek Drive, did that get taken care of, or?
I don't think we've got some yet, but we're actually demoing a, uh, actual asphalt unit, um, next week, we're going to be letting that out to the pothole gravitall, just so we can get some nice, I just have, just some potholes with it. So that should happen next week.
Okay, great, thank you.
I don't have anything, Walter?
Um, three items, uh, Chief Falls and I are working with regard to the railroad, uh, Norfolk Southern has been very uncooperative, they've blocked the, uh, interchanges and streets all up and down several times more than their legal fifteen minutes.
With the.
Uh, they are not letting us know anything with regards to that, so both of us are continuing to work with.
Well, they might have other things occupying their, their attention these days.
Yes, um, I realize that, but we have, particularly in my neighborhood, we have someone who has a major health issue, and we cannot have it blocked as it was several weeks ago, um, probably forty-five minutes, people were late to work and late to school, so we're continuing to work with that.
Was that the coal train that they just stopped?
There, there is no coal.
Because I've noticed it in East Belmont.
There is no coal being moved, that's on a different spur, so we're still trying to get to the potluck.
Okay, got you.
So, um, it's been very strange, they have flatbed cars, they're moving back and forth and they have nothing on them. Richard, please follow our social media policies so we can work more effectively as a team, if you would do that. Um, the hospital intersection finally is open, so now you can go where you should, and it's not blocking across the interstate, so that's the good news. It's taken obviously years, it seems like, so that's a great thing, so that's mine.
The, the only, uh, thing I have is, um, I don't know if it'd be possible to maybe put together like a little like thing for our Facebook, like how taxes work. Uh, because I've been getting a lot of questions about that and seeing a lot of stuff out there that's just actually not correct, um, you know, about like how, like the process works and like where the tax rates come from and all that kind of good stuff, like. I don't, I, I, I'm thinking like, I don't, like. I, I tried to do that, on my Facebook page, but. Well, sort of, I mean, I think to understand where the tax, I, I, the, most of the questions I've gotten is, alright, we understand the, the rate or the, the, the values went up. But are you all going to then take the rate back down so that you, it's sort of beating around the bush at the revenue neutral tax rate without like really understanding how the revenue neutral tax rate works and, and everything. Right, yeah.
Let me tell you what, I thought Tom Keegan the other day, they're going to try to get it down, so.
So. You're trying to get people to understand the correlation between the tax, the current tax rate, the current, the new valuation.
What that mean? Well, I think the mindset, at least what I'm getting, is that the buck stops with us, with a lot of the taxes, particularly property taxes, where a lot of that burden is from the county's perspective. So I think people are misguided. Correct, yeah, what is city, what is county, and then resources that they can contact for those. Yeah, 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 that's a good way of putting, yeah, yeah, it's just because I, there's, I've seen a lot of confusion out there that, I wouldn't necessarily expect the average run-of-the-mill person to understand how all this works, because they're not living and breathing it every day, so when you see your valuation go up by sixty percent, I can understand the freak out.
So what I might do is just say a scenario, a real easy number, kind of break the pass down, made it by county, made it by city, made it by, and just kind of did a bit of infographics, you know, like.
I think that's fair.
And yeah, we need to remind people, some people still are not realizing it automatically happens every four years, and some people are still thinking we're the ones in charge of that, which of course we're not.
Yep, and it might help to add that we did decrease taxes last year, and we have not decided what we're doing this year for future year, yeah.
I would just mention that revenue neutral number is still in play, you know, we haven't evaluated it yet, because I'm getting a lot of questions about our tax rate and where we're going with it. No, we don't, but that's, that's the question.
But, like, just sort of explaining what it is and how, you know, how, what factors go into it, um, and how it, you know, what, what's required of us by state law and the statutes regarding the revenue neutral tax rate and what, what sort of. Okay, now we've gone to. Well, alright, alright, alright. A series of posts. Well, that's probably true, we, a lot, you know, we don't do a lot of infographics, I'm afraid. Jim wants a packet mailed out to every road.
I'll try to put something together that's just explaining, actually, the tax rate, actually, how you know it is going to come on, and then we'll somewhat address a little bit, I'll work with Barry.
Is some of this basically related to process and timing, what works when, and the flow of the process?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, because, because some of the stuff I've seen is like, oh, it's like an opportunistic grab, while property values are high, let's, you know, and it's like, you know, there, there's a process that's set out in law. And, you know, the, the tax rate comes from two different bodies and, you know, but I don't think it's very complicated, it's very hard to explain that to everyone on the internet, so. two different bodies and, you know, but I don't think it's very complicated, it's very hard to explain that to everyone on the internet, so.
So we should do two different ones, one to kind of outline just how the taxes are broken down within like county and underneath that, putting the school, what the county does, and the U are separated.
Yeah.
At two hundred fifty dollars, something like that. And then we could put together a timeline, so people kind of base on your budget cost every year, when and what, when you decide.
I think that's good, because I've had-
The tax rate that needs to be submitted to the county and what the county-
Right. I've had those questions, like how, all right, we understand that the tax rate needs to be set, but like how does that, when are you going to decide that? How does that work?
Yeah, I would do those two separate.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
And then I'll, yeah, with Barry, Steve, we can kind of come up with some verbiage on that.
Yeah, because we need to be careful about that because we're talking about a whole lot of CIP projects. So we may not be able to hit totally revenue neutral, but hopefully make it beneficial to the taxpayers.
Charlie, I have one more thing. It's not a debate or discussion. I would be curious in the future, what we just did tonight, looking at that being potentially administrative with adding on the garage and the, and if, as much as administrative as possible with that. I don't know if that was necessarily prudent for our time spent, I guess.
Well, I mean, we got a, the annexation required a-
Annexation maybe, but I don't know, streamlining some of that potentially.
Do you want to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.